Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, where we stand, in our nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and justice for all.
Thank you. George, would you please do the roll call?
Aldag?
Here.
Griffin?
Here.
Hubbard?
Here.
Michelle's?
Here.
Schlaf?
Here.
Semi Pharaoh?
Here.
Kyo, absent. Shabe, absent.
Okay, item C on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the city council meeting for July eighth, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion, please? Motion by Schlaf, second by Aldag. Any comments? Seeing none, you please call vote.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes. We have no pre-arranged participation? Non-arranged participation? If there's anyone in the audience or online wishing to speak before the council, please come forward, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes or less. Anybody online, Josh? Okay. Um, any declaration of conflict of interests? Okay. Approval agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion by Aldag, second by Schlaf. Any comments, additions, changes? Councilmember Michelle's? Uh, Parks and Rec should move K three to M three?
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Um, we were just, I thought we were gonna plan to read that tonight. Are those corrections that you wouldn't want read? And would you would want this pushed to a further meeting? I'm asking because if it's something that you wouldn't want read, we should push it to a further meeting. Like content items? Or inaccurate, inaccurate things, like typos and stuff?
Well, we can review it at the time. It, and we'll either do it or-
Read it or wrong, okay.
Okay, um, is there any other items? Okay.
So wait, 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 just to clarify, we're taking that off the consent agenda?
Off of K three and make it an M three, yes.
Got it.
Thank you. Okay, uh, please call vote for the agenda with the change of K three, consideration of Parks and Rec Month proclamation to M three new business.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes. Uh, we have no public hearings. Uh, communications in the packet include the upcoming meeting list. Is there any questions, comments, or changes on the upcoming meeting list? Okay? I'm sorry?
The, uh, we also want, uh, regional by the suspension to either the second Wednesday or third.
Are you gonna get notice of that?
I'm gonna be able to. We, we have to do a survey. We, we're switching up the times.
Okay, so is the current date that's in there okay, or is that gonna change?
It, it will change. It, it will change, but I'll-
Okay.
If, if you can just let, let me know when it's decided, second or third.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else on the meetings calendar? Okay, uh, reports. The first item is Finance Director, Treasurer, Assessor, Marie Sher. Marie is online?
Yep, good evening, council. Um, I'm not gonna turn my camera on because I look the way I sound. Um, you have my quarterly report. The fiscal year did end with everything within budget, uh, which is great, and I have nothing, I have no updates.
Is there any questions for Marie on the report? Councilmember, member Michelle's?
You, you said we finished in budget, but there's a lot of red in here. Could you care to touch on any of our red?
Um, well, it depends on where the red is. If the red is in revenue, that means that the revenue was higher than budgeted. Um, if the red is in the departments, as long as the department is not over, then it's okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Oh. I'm sorry, Zach. I know what you're looking at. Just a moment. Yeah, the red there is the available balance. So it, as long as it is, um, the year-to-date balance, which is the third column, isn't more than the amended budget, then we're fine.
Okay.
That did have one more comment on the State of Tax Commission, uh, page twenty-one on packet. It still lists fourteen nickels as supervisor and city manager.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Oh, sorry. On page twenty-one, the Michigan State Tax Commission assessment, it still lists fourteen nickels as supervisor for common city manager.
I know, I've told them three times now.
Oh, dear.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you, Marie.
Thank you.
Uh, Public Services Superintendent Tim Stewart, uh-
He, he is, uh, he's, he's out today.
Okay.
But I, I can try and answer any-
Sure. Do anybody have any questions that Justin can either try to answer or take back to Tim? He got off like- Okay, uh, Community Development Manager, Michelle Anil.
Good evening, council. How are you this evening?
Good.
Excellent. You have my report in front of you before I go into my one update. You have any questions for me? Okay. So, um, following up on the thirty forty-five Broad Street and the decision to move forward with additional workshops, um, the DDA's planning consultant, uh, CID Planning is proposing to facilitate, uh, they submitted a proposal for the DDA. It's in the supplement on the DDA's website. Um, you may have already seen it, but for the public, um, the, the, uh, consultant is proposing to facilitate two public meetings and to create two redevelopment design concepts. The first workshop would be primarily designed as a listening session, but structured for maximum effectiveness. Attendees will, uh, review feedback received from a public engagement workshop that happened in December, uh, twenty seventeen. Um, changes that, uh, have occurred on the site as well as surrounding properties. Um, and the previous redevelopment concepts that were created in twenty eighteen or twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, which had broad consensus from the community at that time. Um, they feel the key to success will be listening first, uh, and acknowledging what gets said. And second, even if a comment doesn't make it into a final concept that has consensus of the community, um, um, it's still important to listen to what people have to say. Excuse me. The overall goal of the first workshop will be to listen and hear what the public has to say about what's important for the redevelopment of thirty forty-five Broad. And then two, to establish consensus on a preferred redevelopment alternative. They have proposed this in a, um, an amount naturally received fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars, um, which the DDA have, uh, approved and, uh, has approved the, um, chair to go ahead and execute, but they've also asked, uh, as part of it, and before the workshops are scheduled for staff to, um, obtain proposals for a, an economic benefit of parks study. So, uh, I'll be working with Justin and Josh on that, um, so that we can get something out and, um, get those proposals back, uh, in time for the DDA's next meeting. Um, that's all I've got for updates. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Councilmember Griffin?
Yeah, where can we find what you were just reading from?
The DDA's webpage. Supplement for a better meeting.
From the July first?
Yeah, no.
The one-
Planning on the DDA.
Oh, did I go to plan? Maybe I went to DDA, DDA. And I heard you reference that they're gonna be looking back to the twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen public engagement. Are they also looking at the public engagement we just had?
That would be part of it as well. The, the, the reason for looking back, it's the old adage. In order to know where you're going, you gotta know where you've been, so.
Right. I mean, I, I appreciate, yeah, I think all historic information is relevant. At the same time, that data was, that public input was gathered several weeks ago.
But it's, 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 it's a, it's a foundation. It's a launch point for moving forward and listening to what people say.
Right. So opinions can change over time. The composition of our community can change over time.
That's true.
So it's true. That they keep that in mind. Uh, and then at the last meeting, I'd asked about the outlaw in front of Noble Appliance and how there was a for-sale sign, my recollection was. And who said that hadn't been decided yet, that you were meeting with the owners at that time? Do you have an update on that meeting?
Yep. The, um, we did meet. They are still in the process of revising their plans to meet the conditions of approval that were granted by council. Um, and they will be coming forward with their, excuse me, uh, requests to amend the PUD in order to create that outlaw. In the meantime, they can post a sign that says for sale. They just won't be able to sell anything yet because it's not a, it's been created.
Okay.
But they can generate interest for it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, J four is Boards, Commissions, and Other Reports. The Washington County Sheriff Report is in your packet. Um, I don't know if anybody has any other reports on any other ones that are listed there. If not, um, you don't have any subcommittee reports, City Manager Report.
Sure. Um, so I'd, I'd like to begin by, um, referencing, uh, consent item, uh, key two. Uh, the appointment of, uh, Jenna Kuick as city clerk, and I'd like to introduce Jenna Kuick, uh, who is in the audience. Um, Jenna's been with us for a little over two years, and we're, we're excited to have the opportunity to move her into this new position. Um, I just wanted to invite her out of this meeting, so everybody has a chance to, to meet her. Other than that, um, we've been moving along in, um, hiring for, uh, four positions. Um, and, uh, it, it's a pretty time-intensive process, uh, going through, uh, multiple interviews for, for each position. Um, so that's been a lot of my, uh, last two weeks or so. Um, but, uh, the, uh, road projects are moving along.
Are the hiring process going good, bad?
Uh, good, good. Yeah, so, so we, we got, um, we got a good number of applications for the Finance Director on Deck position, which, which we're all really glad to see. Um, we've got, we got sixteen applications for the Administrative Assistant position, which was a lot. Um, or at least in, in my opinion, was, was a lot. Um, and, uh, we're ready to make an offer on a, uh, utility operator. And, um, we're moving into second interviews for, uh, DPW Administrative Assistant and, um, Finance Director on Deck. Great, so we're, we're, we're getting close for, for all.
So, is there three or four positions you're?
Sure. Uh, so to, to a total of four, um, Utility Operator, uh, DPW Worker, uh, Finance Director on Deck, and Administrative Assistant.
Okay.
Yep, I have a question about just all the administrative pairings. So my recollection is that we have not previously had a separate singular role for city clerk. Is that right? That when you were city clerk, it was in addition to some other duties?
Correct.
Is this change now creating a singular city clerk position? So, so adding them?
It's, 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 it's a new position, um, and so it will be, uh, city clerk and deputy treasurer.
Deputy treasurer.
Yep.
So we're adding then like an FTE?
Correct.
And there's some plan over some period of time? How many total FTEs are being added?
Uh, so, so it, it, it has been included in the budget, and it was talked about during, um, some of our work sessions, um, bringing the, the, the goals for, for succession planning.
Right.
Um, the, these are, um, at least for now, um, the biggest changes that are, that, that we have planned.
So how many new FTEs are coming on in this fiscal year?
Uh, two. One, one, one being the City Clerk and Deputy Treasurer, and one being, uh, the sixth DPW.
Okay, thank you.
And we used to have a separate clerk, correct?
Uh, so we, um, while we were a village, uh, at least up until a certain point, the clerk was an elected position.
Right, Donna was the clerk.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then it moved over to a part-time, uh, village clerk. And then when we became a city, um, that kind of coincided with my hiring. Um, and I did most, almost all of the, uh, clerk duties as assistant two.
Uh huh.
And then, uh, when I was, I, and then I was officially promoted, um, or had the clerk title added, uh, to my title as assistant two and city clerk in, uh, twenty seventeen.
Okay. Any other questions on that topic? Okay.
Um, we're looking for volunteers for paint dexter, and paint dexter's coming up quick, um, so we're, we're gearing up for that and really excited about it. Um, the August primary is also coming up here pretty quick, uh, and so, um, we're continuing to sending out absentee ballots, uh, receiving applications. Um, we're, we have a couple of election inspector trainings coming up later this week. And, uh, working with, with Jenna to, to walk through all of those processes.
Right, and we had the election committee or commission
Mm-hmm.
meeting.
Uh, two weeks ago Friday. Yeah, and then, um, then we have an election commission meeting coming up, uh, this Friday.
For the accuracy.
For the accuracy test at ten, yep. Um, does anybody have any, have any questions for me?
Yep. So for the past couple of meetings, I've talked about, uh, the, uh, potential agenda item related to the, uh, additional information relating to the need for growth. I referenced, uh, brief memo that Marie put together. And you had said there's maybe somebody else you could bring in that could speak to that, but just as we can continue to bring on additional development and defend the development by telling residents, we need the additional property tax revenue. I, and I know others at the table would like some numbers to be able to point to. We have three weeks until the next meeting. When do you think we could have a discussion?
Yeah, so, so as I did talk to Marie briefly about that, um, Marie, were, were you able to, to find that document?
Uh, no, I haven't had a chance to look for it yet. Um, the email Jamie that you, that I sent you, uh, the document, could you possibly forward that to me?
I can, yeah, it's in a supplement also.
Do you know the date?
Uh, yeah, I don't have it pulled up, but yeah, I mean, I can find it and send it both to both of you.
Okay, that, that, that would help me a lot.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Jamie, would you mind, uh, copying me on that as well? Because as you mentioned, there are others of us at the table.
It's publicly available.
No, I know, but-
My including other people is not a problem.
No, 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 there's only two of us, but so it's like, I think it's okay for you to send it because there's definitely not a quorum on that email, and if you know exactly where it is, I mean, I can definitely go find it too.
Yeah.
But if you know where it is and you're gonna send it, I'd appreciate you just copying me on it because, again, that is something I'm very interested in seeing as well.
Okay. Y'all said?
I think so.
Okay. All right, any other questions for the City Manager before we move on? Okay, thank you. Uh, the mayor's report is in the packet. Uh, I don't know if anyone had any questions or comments about it. Okay. Uh, councilmember reports, councilmember Michelle's?
Uh, I'm gonna tend to try and get this in, uh, under DAFD, uh, or whatever the PPR is for our budget, so I figured it'd be really fun to see what they're doing. So, yeah, fans are soft right now. Just describing what we've been doing in the past.
Anything notable?
Uh, not especially, um, there, so I, I will guess. If you want to say that the, the items categorized, the shared ones are either ones that we all got together and said we're not charging anyone specifically for, so like ones to school, neutral aid runs if someone shows up to the building, uh, those types of things. There haven't been a lot of fires, uh, lately, but one of them you'll notice that a significant portion of what you do is respond to them in calls.
Mm-hmm.
And it's mostly nobody. They are now with having three stations staffed and two people better able to respond to all the calls at the same time. Um, and it doesn't necessarily show here unless you go and check it, so, but I think they said they, since they started tracking forty calls, then where they're out in some place and another call came in, or two came inside things. So that's, uh, really good for policy.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions about the fire department information? Okay. Item K, Consent Agenda.
I move we approve the three consideration items on the consent agenda. Number one, bills and payroll on the amount of six hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-six cents. Two, appointment of Jenna Kuick as city clerk. And three, road closure requests from the Dexter Chamber of Commerce for the Dexter Summer Festival, AKA Dexter Days, from Wednesday, August seventh, twenty twenty-four through Sunday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
All right, is there a second, please? I'll say that. Motion by Hubbard, second by Schlaf, for the consent agenda items. Please call vote.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes. Okay, uh, there are no unfinished business items under new business M one, consideration of Kentwood Place Preliminary Plan Unit Development Review. Um, do we have a motion, please?
Yes, um, I'm on page ninety-eight of our packet, motion one. In consideration of the recommendation, um, from the Planning Commission, the information provided by the applicant and the reviews from the staff, CWA, OHM, and the AFD. And following the public hearing conducted on July first, twenty twenty-four by the Planning Commission, the city council determines the Kenwood Place Plan Unit Development, EPP three, P two four dash zero 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 eight application, received April second, twenty twenty-four, provides the following recognizable and material benefits, the five that are listed in our packet. Followed, the city council further determines the proposed PUD project demonstrates com- compliance with general provisions in section nineteen oh three, the design standards in section nineteen oh four, and meets the intent of the PUD district's standards in section nineteen oh five E to qualify for PUD designation, and therefore, the Planning Commission recommends approval of the Kenwood Preliminary PUD side plan. Revision dated June sixth, twenty twenty-four. Response letter dated June sixth, twenty twenty-four, PUD qualifications memorandum dated June sixth, twenty twenty-four. Summary of infiltration testing at eighty twenty Forest Street dated November ninth, twenty twenty-three, revised unit floor plans for buildings A and B dated June sixth, twenty twenty-four, and revised building plans for building A, B, and C dated June tw- sixth, twenty twenty-four to city council. Subject to following conditions, um, so all the deviations and the conditions.
Exactly. That's like something I-
That should have been city council.
It's city council is approving, and you would just take out two city councils, and then the last one, you're running subject to the conditions.
Okay, is there a second? I'm sorry. Okay, motion by Aldag, second by Schlaf? Usain.
Okay, okay. So this is the preliminary, um, uh, Plan Unit Development, Kentwood Place. The recommendation from city council, it, or from Planning Commission is identified here. I'm happy to go in and summarize more, but the applicant is here, and he'd like them to make a presentation to you. They're able to do that before I go into mine. Let me know how we'd like to proceed.
Any feedback? Do you wanna hear from the applicant, or? Yes.
But just the biggest thing I would like to hear is why the PUD is required in this situation and how the public benefit is something that would not be obtained under conventional zoning. So for example, I see on page ninety-three, um, that it says there is no by right. Um, what did I see there?
There is no by right use that would be allowed.
On Baker Road. So anyways, so I guess anything that addresses, those are the issues that I'm interested in, however they come across.
Wait, that's good, good point. So that's one I-
I don't, yeah.
No, no, that's okay. Is there, do you wanna hear from the applicant, or are we okay with the presentation, the information we've gotten?
I have a question. Yes. Um, on page one thirty-eight, uh, there's a letter from Marcus from OHM. And it indicates that they're gonna have water coming off Baker Road and Forest.
So that is something that's going to be finalized through the final when it comes to you. Um, but because the road project on Baker Road is coming to a completion, there won't be water coming from Baker Road. Everything will come off Forest.
So he needs to change his letter?
It will be changed.
Okay.
Yeah, that, there's, this, this is sort of a fluid situation between when he did his report, Planning Commission made the recommendation, and this now coming to you.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a question?
I have questions. Not, not for the best, so I just heard there's only gonna be water coming in one direction, one spot, there's gonna be water.
It will not, let me try and remember how they put it, uh, it will not be a loop system, um.
So, so I ask because I'm showing the fire, and my understanding of fire is generally have to be looped.
So-
And also there's risks.
Hopefully Ed will be able to help me out because there's the technicality or, um, the technical details that, um, will be worked out as part of the funnel to, um, with the fire department, um, suppression of the buildings. That fire hydrant, the additional use of a fire hydrant in the parking lot, and, um, um, but there is not water coming off Baker because, um, the, the road is done, and we don't want it cut into in order to create this. Just this one lead coming from the main.
Okay. Hold on a second. So I'm assuming we don't want the applicant to present, right? We, we, we've seen the plan, we know what it is. All right, if that's not the case, please let me know. Okay, um, then Michelle, do you want?
So-
Go ahead.
Applicant representative of Midwest Consulting can talk with you hopefully more diligently than I can.
About the engineering items?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Good evening. That is with Midwestern Consulting. Uh, so, yeah, to address the, the water, um, first that, that is gonna be looped. The, to the point of the construction on Baker Road going on, it's just gonna have to be jacket board under Baker. So that's how that connection is gonna be made to that side, but the water may will be looped to the side. Um, and in terms of sanitary, um, there is gonna be, uh, kind of due to the same construction timing constraints, uh, the sensitivity on Baker, uh, it's gonna be pumped out, uh, the two buildings that front Baker are gonna be pumped out to that side, and then the rest is gonna go to Forest.
Okay.
Good. What does pumped out to the side mean to Baker Road?
To Baker, yeah, so there'll be, uh, low pressure grinder pumps running the buildings and-
And that'll be your responsibility to maintain, not the city's?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, while we're on engineering, Zach, did you have any other questions about the engineering?
Uh, yes, I'll fill this out there generally. The, the geometry for the entrances off of Baker Hill and Forest Street seem kind of close. These are the non-technical term, where the entrance is not from the travel lane, but from within parallel parking lane. Um, and then from Forest, it's within the, an aim of parking. It seems very awkward and very poorly designed that would cause traffic issues in future. We're turning on push-up. Is, is the final design very low risk or is it gonna be deep down?
So I think the intent was to utilize the existing curb cuts there. Um, and, yeah, this made preliminary, some of those, uh, details, like the geometry, the exact configuration can be worked out a little, a little finer detail.
I'm sorry, so you're suggesting there would be an update on the final? I'm sorry, so you're suggesting there would be an update on the final?
The attention in council would be more comfortable making any specific condition approval.
Okay. I mean, I don't know if that needs to happen or not. I assume you're going to do that as a, as, as part of the plan.
Yeah, so it would be part of the process of going through that more kind of detailed engineering scrutiny and, um, you know, uh, coordination staff.
Okay. Were there any other questions for the applicant on the drawings or engineering? Councilmember Michelle's.
What happened to building C?
The planning committees have already depressed buildings. The what went under the same seat um that um. When they come in for final engineering, um, they will have to make sure that. There is a floor plan violation from porch building and not just um. Uh, have us assume that C is where the stub will land.
Uh, well, well, we're on building E, my understanding is the. Multi-use that's being pitched is there's going to be live workspace.
Right.
How do we guarantee that's used as a workspace and not just more living space? The part of pitches we're doing multi-use.
So when they come in for preliminary zoning compliance in order to get their building permits. Their construction drawings are going to have to be specific to show that the, the first floor is a commercial space. And the upstairs is a residential space, just like what was done at thirty seventy five Baker Road.
Is that going to be codified in the development agreement on all approvals?
When you say codified, then I'm not trying to. That it is a live workspace? Absolutely, it's part of the.
This one will show the parking space next to the dumpster enclosure. My recollection is ours on it requires that the exterior dungeon enclosure be screened with vegetation. Did they request a modification to not screen that side?
It's not a parking space. I think what they were showing is the turning radiuses. The um, it will be a brick enclosure, but there is a landscaping and I believe that the planning commission. Did have a landscape waiver, but let me. No, it doesn't have a landscape waiver, so they have to figure a way to uh provide that or requested it final.
Guess a bigger question now, the, the front entrances. The link be. Are going to sidewalk on the property that's owned by the city.
Right, it's owned by the DDA. The DDA has reviewed the plan. They asked them to make it instead of a five-foot sidewalk, a seven-foot sidewalk. That was shown to the DDA in their June meeting. The DDA was receptive to it. And a, an easement agreement will have to be um, uh, as it's shown in the conditions of approval, will have to be done with the DDA.
And will the city assume response?
No, as part of the development agreement that will be. Part of their responsibility.
What would happen to that in the future if the city determines it means to have a parking structure there?
We'll cross that bridge when we come to it, but there haven't been those types of discussions, but it hasn't been something that we've discussed.
Well, I, I think it's important because that.
I completely understand that.
And so I, that's probably which that we all cross. Is the pocket park in the back going to be available to public?
The best of my knowledge.
Uh, one of the benefits listed or criteria is that the enhanced pedestrian accessibility. Will be available for the public to go through the site on.
Correct, that's why there's also an easement that's requested for, required for that as a condition of approval.
And the applicant will be responsible for maintaining places match.
The one that they're proposing, yes.
I'm going to jump into some little sticky details now, um. Again, there shouldn't be these planted anywhere in the city because we have here and here will eat them. And destroy them and the folks left here, but we have some here on one of our houses.
So, but just real quick. We don't do a detailed review at this junction for, for uh preliminary because they have to do it for final. But I appreciate your comments because they hear and they'll have to cooperate that.
Uh, the other elements that I don't know of landscaping is Japanese tree line off is this is a basis piece by the state of the year.
Oh, when did they do that? It must have been just recent.
The service berry, I wouldn't consider it as a tree. If you want to try to call it tree, it has to be specified as same stem, otherwise it's just a really good throw. And um, my experience has been that they, they need really ideal conditions in order for. I have to place a lot of that that that. Uh, in urban tech settings. Many of the trees that I've posed are going to be very short or very narrow. And I don't believe they'll do a good job of screening the building, buildings that I have up for before we even at peak. They're going to have a half way for building mature. Um, so I'm not entirely convinced that they're going to do what they intend to do. Let's see, I, I have a bigger question. The application material states that the buildings are designed to be consistent with other structures in that. I, I can't close my eyes and see any other building that has more than that except for the post, the right next to post office that used to be a barn. I don't know many other structures that have. A large stone. This, it feels like a very generic building that I would see.
Mr. Chair?
Go, oh, go ahead.
Hi, I'm here for one of the owners and applicants. So I specifically walked around that neighborhood and I saw a lot of fieldstone. And that's why I asked our architect to put the fieldstone because there are fieldstone bases, so many porches in that neighborhood. And a lot of, of the proposed, the original drawing had a lot of brick in it. I did not see a lot of brick in that neighborhood. You see a lot of siding. And so I suggested the board of battening because I figured that was more. It was more similar to what you had in that neighborhood. So the whole idea was to um make it more harmonious, so um I. That's um, that was kind of my idea that I asked the architect to.
I, I appreciate that. It doesn't clarify, it is going to be like a fieldstone stuck on there. Right now I'm just trying to set this veneer show, which could be a lot of things.
We can make sure you don't take that, that's fine.
Uh, I, I would suggest instead of having uh brick sills. Then instead of being either stone, limestone, solid piece, limestone piece. Or cast concrete, it's more consistent with structures and not how. Um, if these are going to be continually in long buildings, uh, we can do the, the brick sills. That also is a point of metric for water and my experience is agents are really bad at any things. So it's been better for the system. These are to maintain to the future. Biggest challenge I have with this. And I, I recognize that is a challenging site to take, put these types of uses on. It feels extremely awkward how the buildings relate to each other. So we have places where. The front of the building is looking at the side of the building. The front of the building. Is looking at the back. It just, it, it feels extremely awkward. Um, it's difficult for me to see with how these barrages are done that anyone's ever been to a pond of those. It's very difficult for me to imagine anyone coming down on a baker or on there and it's going to be like a hatching something street animal. Where there's dirty, dirty acid with the plant that will come out of water. Which is not consistent with the intent of creating a walkable area. I'm, I'm not convinced at all the decision criteria I made, but I have a nice challenge with the site. I appreciate. Brand buried housing, um, that is supposed to know. That's all.
Okay. Any other questions about the design or the engineering or ordinances, that type of area? Okay, the only other question I think we had was council member Griffins about the PUD, if you could elaborate, please?
Yes, so. Object site is currently zone central business district. Two family and townhouse slash attached residential building forms are allowed with special approval. On a site type A corridor street type in the central business district for the regulating plan. And the authorized building, authorized building forms table, section eleven. Further regulating plan and the authorized building forms table. However, two family, single family attached and multiple family land uses. Are limited to site type A in E parcels on downtown B and Village Streets. Um, that means that the form is allowed, but the uses that would go in those forms aren't, there isn't. That ability. So um, that results in this inconsistent treatment, if you will, between building form and color planning land use. The applicant would not have been able to come in with this straight site plan. Um, because they would have had to request a use variance. And RZDA is not enabled to uh hear or brand use variances. So the PUD process is the only process that provides the applicant an opportunity to redevelop the site. In a manner that could be acceptable to the city. Um, it results in what the planning commission determined was high-quality design and layout. Um, and that would not have been able to be done for a con- conventional plan.
Thanks, Michelle. So I found, yeah. On ninety three where it says no building form is permitted by right on the Baker Road parcel under the current zoning coordinates. Have we identified, I mean, was that intentional and have we identified other such parcels that would? Find themselves in a similar situation? I mean, there's not a lot of vacant land.
That, yeah, there isn't any other vacant land. It was not intentional. But it's one of those things that if. You do your best with your zoning ordinance, but you're not going to cover every single instance. That's why you either have a. DDA to help with the relief where you need the criteria or you have other processes. For allowing development. Um, in this case, the PUD was the, the um. Recommended alternative and planning commission agreed with what they.
So the requirement then that a PUD. Provides the certain number of recognizable and material benefits that could not be obtained under conventional zoning. Almost by definition apply at least to the Baker Road parcel because there is no conventionally zoned. Allowed. Development on Baker Road. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Michelle's.
The micro units, as I'm reading the plans, it appears that they're only accessible from the rear of the building. Is that correct? Looks like the entrance is from the back.
Is there any other follow-up or comment or is that just an observation?
Well, it, it doesn't seem consistent with the side of the pedestrian environment. People have to sneak in the back out to get. They're not triggering the foot traffic, they're, they're separated like the living in a spur.
Okay, all right, understand, thank you. The council member Hubbard.
Thanks. I just want to respond quickly, um, based on the planning commission discussion to what council member Michelle's just said. I do agree with that aspect of it, the pedestrian aspect, but I, we had a discussion at planning, a lot of people pointed this out and I. I agree with this and I think for me at least. It overrides the pedestrian aspect. Those micro units are filling a um. A void in our variety of housing and I think that um. It's, it's something that could be very, very helpful to a certain segment of. Either the population who is graduating and trying to get jobs here, our teachers or. You know, I mean, it's just, it, it feels, it fills an important void for me and so for me that overrides it.
I experienced some architectures that. The bedrooms in the front, that's also going to be awkward with the bedroom in the back.
Sure, and I mean, I don't disagree with that, but I guess my, my point is that. I would rather have, if it can't be changed, if it can, great. If it can't be changed, I would rather have that option there for people. And there will be people who will take up that option, even if it is an awkward layout. Because there is none of that here. There's none of that type of housing here right now. So I just, that's again, that's my opinion on the matter.
Understand, okay, good, thank you.
Just a general comment maybe to Michelle, I guess, to this applicant or other applicants. When I review things like this, I personally find the three-dimensional mockups of the buildings in context. To be the most helpful way to visualize how harmonious the. Proposed development is. I don't know if at this stage in a project it's difficult to. Create those renderings or not, but I guess I would encourage this applicant or any applicant to bring. To have those three D rendering in color showing the building in context as early in the process as possible.
You can make sure that there are three D.
Okay. Our last chance, any other comments, questions, issues? Okay.
I do have a question.
I'm sorry.
So this also, so this reads preliminary PUD um review. Is this also preliminary site plan review?
Yes, the preliminary.
Functions the same. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, the motion on the table by Aldag, second by Schlaf, motion number one in your packet. With the associated allowances and the directions. Uh, Georgia, please call the vote.
Aldag?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Michelle's?
No.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Semi Faro?
Yes. Motion passes four to two. Thank you. Uh, item M two, consideration of direction regarding the solid waste ordinance, container set out time and waste management start time. I don't know if somebody wants to make a motion or if we want to have some review from the city manager first. Uh, council member Michelle's. I'm sorry, option A, keep it the ordinance at seven AM or the waste management? Pickup at seven, both at seven. Okay, all right, there's a motion to maintain the ordinance at seven AM start and to request waste management to. Begin no earlier than seven AM. Is there a second? Motion by Michelle, second by Griffin. Justin, will you go through it?
Sure. Um, so a- as we're moving through the process of um coming to a, to a draft final agreement with uh waste management. Um, one of the items that uh has come up and council is discussing before is that um. We, we know the waste management is coming in before seven, um, but. We, we know the waste management is coming in before seven, um, but. Uh, current advertising, um, and the current ordinance allows people to, to set their material out at seven. Um, which not. Regularly, but occasionally can result in the conflict of waste, waste management being in before somebody sets, sets out their. Waste management has asked if we would consider, um. Moving up the time, uh, that they're allowed to be in, uh, before seven, um, essentially keeping things the way they are. And in previous conversations here at council, there's kind of been. I, I've, I've gotten different opinions from different council members. So I wanted to bring this back as kind of a. Let's make this, make the decision whether it's keep it as it is or, uh, make changes. If we were to make a change to the ordinance to, you know, bump it up to six AM, then we'd need to, to set a public hearing. And the idea being that if we wanted to set that public hearing and make that change, then it would, um, coincide with, um. The bringing of the waste management contract back, um, at the second meeting in August. If, if, uh, council wants to keep, uh, the ordinance the same and, um. Start the, start with, have waste management start at seven, um, then we'll, we will enforce that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councilmember Michelle, so you'd made the motion. Did you want to comment?
Yeah, I've heard a lot of people who were upset about the. And my take is they're primarily concerned about the noise, not that they're attracted enough. With the sixth, then you hear five point. Seven is a decent time. I understand the concerns with traffic. But if they're clever at designing, they're good industrial operations and they're. And if the comment says you won't have to throw necessarily, we'd go downtown and if you. And those dancers will be allowed. The, the loading dock or the union with my spot, it, it is quiet. So I think we should try and.
Good. Councilmember Griffin. You'd seconded the motion.
Um, yeah, sure. I guess I would just echo the same that I've heard similar. Concerns that if we, if we push it to six, they're going to be coming even earlier, that they're already coming close to six o'clock. I think, right, I agree that it's more a concern about noise and disruption in that regard than it is about the inconsistency and when it's being picked up. And I guess I would also say. You know, there would be other times they could come too.
Okay. Thank you.
I know there was this caveat Dan had suggested, if there, there are times when there's construction happening or something like that. I'm open to those occasional.
Deviations.
Deviations, yes.
Was there, I'm sorry, councilmember Hubbard.
Uh, yeah, I just have a question about the. Okay, so if we do keep it the way it is. Are they going to not come at six AM anymore? Are they going to keep coming at six AM? I mean, I definitely. Respect the concerns about. Early noise because I do not get up at six AM, but they do not pick up my trash until afternoon. So it's not. Just because it's not an issue for me, if they started doing that, I, I'd probably also be not pleased. Um, the reason I'm asking is because if they do truly start to come at seven. Um, and they do see a backup with traffic either in the morning or in the afternoon. I, number one, I, I, well, I guess the question is, but I want to follow up with something. When would be our next? Ability to adjust that if it truly does start causing a traffic problem? And I only bring that up because I have been stuck behind the SIO township truck during rush hour. On Dexter Ann Arbor Road many times and it's very dangerous. Um, so I just want to make sure that we're not creating a different problem. If we can avoid it.
So, um. The, what we're looking at now is a, is a five year extension.
So we wouldn't be able to change anything for five years.
Correct. If, if, if they agree to amend the contract, which I mean, if, if, if we're moving it up, then I think they would be amenable to that.
Thank you.
Just, uh, adding another comment to what, um. Was said, um. The schools no longer. There are no school buses for the schools within the city of Dexter anymore. Right? So they don't pick up the, so that adds to the traffic because people will now have to. Take their children versus the school bus used to do that. Um, so how does that fit within this that? We are now adding this to potentially the morning traffic as well. Just something to think about.
Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'd really like, if they could help us out on the construction projects, that would be really big. I don't know if they're going to do that. And, um, I didn't know that we don't have any more school buses in Dexter. Wow, going back to the old way, maybe that can walk the school.
That's what they're talking about.
But there's quite a few people that drive anyway. Truth, you know, anytime.
But that also, yeah.
All right, that's it.
Thank you. Follow.
I would suggest that. It may be better to do the ordinance hardware at the seven o'clock start time. But allow for exceptions in case of natural disasters or construction or similar acts of God. That way we have some flexibility. I'd also like to see us, if they come in for four seven, then they're doing noise disturbance, we shouldn't, uh, simple fraction. Or we don't pay them. We're outside the contract. But, but it, it often, it, it would be more ideal to have some flexibility for the here and, um, usual, um, circumstances. Um, that's great thing.
I assume, or do we have some flexibility on that? I mean, I assume administratively would, but not flexibility in the ordinance?
Well, so, so the, the, the ordinance grants people the. The ability to put out until seven.
Right, but as far as collection.
Yeah, so, so if, um. It, it, it doesn't say. Waste management can't come before seven. It says people have until seven to, to put out their, their bins.
Okay.
So if we say put, put your bins out, you know, because of construction, put your bins out at six, waste management is going to come in before. You know, before construction gets going. I, I think that there is that flexibility.
Councilmember Hubbard.
I just have a stupid, well, not stupid, but a. A wah comment to make. Um, I just want to say, I think that, that we, that the fact that this quiet, this community is so quiet and this is an issue that we have to debate. We're very lucky because I'm sitting here going, well, I have people on my street. It's so quiet. And then when people put their trash can out at six AM or five thirty, it wakes me up and like, you know, it's just as loud as the, I mean, it's, you know, loud enough. That it doesn't matter if it's the truck or if it's my neighbor pulling their bin to the corner. So. You know, I mean. I want us to do the best we can with this, but I just also want to point out that this is a good problem to have.
Good point.
Just add that not all parts of the city are that quiet all the time.
True.
Downtown.
Okay. Uh, there is a motion to maintain the, uh, ordinance at seven AM and. Uh, direct, uh, waste management start time no earlier than seven AM. Correct? Okay. Uh. Motion by Michelle, second by Griffin. Um, please call the.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Aldeg?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes. Item M three is the Parks and Recreation Month proclamation. Um, councilmember Michelle, so you had requested this to come off the consent agenda of what were your comments or?
Uh, paragraph two. Replace improving, the, just improved. And, and use after the year. So two reading whereas parks and recreation promote health. Wellness and improved physical and mental health. People who live near parks who rather live near and use parks. Paragraph four. To read whereas the city of Dexter has established Parks and Recreation Commission that oversees and makes recommendations for the upkeep. Comma, maintenance, comma, and improvement of our parks and trailer systems. Don't make fun of them too fast.
Oh, that's all right.
Um, paragraph five. Adding a comma after playing. I am an answer comma fellow. Paragraph seven, that starts where as parks and recreation increases communities economic prosperity. Strike expansion of local tax base, the, the impact it has through increased property values of adjacent properties. Uh, parks are generally taxable. Strike D in front of attraction. So paragraph seven reading whereas parks and recreation increase communities economic prosperity. Through increased property values, increased tourism, attractional, retention of businesses and crime reduction. Uh, paragraph ten. Strike R because the rest of them have always, they've just always started parks. So whereas parks and natural recreation. Paragraph eleven, strike the end, um, because we've finished our. Introductory, um, let's get to the meat and potatoes of. And that's what I.
What is, and so it's like, well, the, the first paragraph that you amended was.
Paragraph two.
Can you say that again? Can you read that again?
Whereas parks and recreation promote health, wellness and improved physical and mental health. Of people who live near and use parks.
Thank you.
So does that emotion make those amendments to it? Thank you. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
All right, motion by Michelle's, the comments and, uh, changes as indicated, second by Hubbard. Uh. Is there any discussion, please?
I just want to say one thing, if, as it's, my editor brain can't turn off if we're going to be doing this. And having just heard the second paragraph read through again. We don't need to say promote health and, and then say physical and mental health because that's saying health twice. So let's just take out health, please. I mean, if we want to start with physical and mental health, great, but I don't think, we don't need to say it twice. It's redundant. And it sounds bad.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilmember.
Yep, so the third to last, whereas, I don't know what number that is. I think we struck areas. But it currently reads whereas parks and natural recreation areas are essential and adaptable infrastructure. I don't know if it makes sense to say parks. And natural recreation are infrastructure. It seems like the areas should be there. Same thing with the last one. It seems like areas needs to be there because it's identifying. I get that it's inconsistent with. Above we're saying parks and recreation and then the last two, we're talking about natural recreation areas, which is different. So I guess feedback on. Whether you can say parks and recreation are infrastructure.
All right, well, I mean, um. If you think traditionally about recreation, um, you, you, you think more passive and active recreation, like, like people doing things versus like. The areas that they are using to, to, to do those things.
I see it that way.
Councilmember.
Um, just briefly, I want to say that.
Wait, is this on the same item that council member Griffin just brought up?
No.
No, okay. Hold on, just, I'm sorry. I thought you were going to comment on that. Um. So are we going to change that? Whereas.
The last.
Whichever one it is.
The last would keep the areas. They feel like that's identifying like the physical space as opposed to.
So what does the third to last whereas read as now?
So the third would say whereas parks and natural recreation areas are essential and adaptable infrastructure. So we keep areas. I think, I think it reads currently. I don't think there's any change to that anymore.
Okay.
And then same thing with the second to last one. I don't think there was any other change to that. So I would just revert those two back to what they were originally.
Are you okay with that?
I, yeah.
Okay. I apologize.
No, it's okay. I mean, I, I'm honestly, I'm fine with any of these changes and I just want to say that like, while. As someone who has been paid to edit political writing and these types of things. This was a fun exercise for me. However, I would have approved this as is in the consent agenda and I'm a point, there are too many cooks in the kitchen with something like this and we can't always achieve perfection. So. This is the first time we've done this and I hope we don't make it a precedent that we do this every single time, but every once in a while it's fun.
Okay. All right, we have some changes on the table for the proclamation. Is there any other comments about the content of the proclamation or? Parks and Recreation Month proclamation. Okay, seeing none. The motion by councilmember Michelle's, second by Hubbard. Uh. As amended. Please call the vote.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Aldeg?
Yeah.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes. Okay. I was going to read the proclamation because Justin had brought it, but we read it. We're good. Um, we're down to end non arranged participation. We have no more participation. Is there anybody online? Does not appear so. Okay. No non arranged participation, council comments. Starting with councilmember Michelle's.
Don't need to ask me now what made in the future for, and I have also heard from folks about, um. Trash bins staying out for a couple of days after collection day. I don't know what sits on four hours is supposed to be bad. Uh, so folks are asking if you'd rather enforce that. And what I, I will say to folks, once Kevin place is built, go walk in the weird space between buildings. It is, it's going to be artifact now investors built environment for hundreds of years as we prove it is going to be awkward and weird and not a fun place. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Griffin. Thank you. Councilmember Allen.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Nope.
Okey doke. All right, uh, any updates or changes to the proposed agenda items for future meetings? Councilmember Michelle's. Just. We did cover twenty-four, twenty-five goals in the budget setting.
We, 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 we talked, we talked about them.
We talked about budget goals, but not necessarily.
We, 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 we reviewed the, the full list.
Got it. Okay.
But we haven't formally adopted.
Correct.
Any other items? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Schlaf, second by Hubbard. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now opposed? We are adjourned at eight oh eight PM.
You're at a meeting, Joe.